All right, it's for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Board member Drake?
Present.
Board member Neesel?
Here.
Board member Steve?
Here.
Board member Bill Arkum?
Here.
Supervisor DeScalfani?
Here.
Legal notice?
Please.
The town board of the town of Shandaken calls for a public hearing on the STR short-term rental, Local Law Number Two of 2022. To be held prior to their regular monthly meeting on Monday, June 6th at 6:30 PM to hear all those for and against such action at 7209 State Route 28, Shandaken, New York. Any questions can be sent to supervisorshandaken@gmail.com or mail to PO Box 1234, Shandaken, New York 12480.
Thank you, Joyce. All right, there were a few additions to the law since the last we met. One, I guess, is a little controversial, but, I mean, everybody has to abide by the zoning code.
Can you explain what that is?
The zoning code?
No, you said the one five, that's not true.
The zoning code. I put in here how in letter C of number three, owners will be issued an initial provisional license following review by the town to assure compliance with this local law, the zoning code, and any other applicable laws and regulations, and a successful building inspection, and having received no correspondence from notified abutters, a fully approved license will be issued. It was suggested while talking to a few councilmen, and this can either stay or go, but right after that, we write correspondence from abutters will be investigated and evaluated against provisions of the STR law by the town before issuing a license.
Sorry, that's an addition?
That's, that goes...
Yeah, because you just...
The next sentence could be to clarify what abutters can say and do.
Could you just read that again?
Certainly, certainly. Correspondence from abutters will be investigated and evaluated against the provisions of the STR law by the town before issuing a license.
Right.
That's just a suggestive add-on to that law to make it a little more clear. Now, everybody who applies for anything in this town has to apply, has to abide by our zoning code. It's written for everyone. It's a, it's a blanket code. If you have something built that predates our code, you're overlooked in a lot of ways. But you cannot, after '76, build something, not have a building permit for it and, and whatnot, and, and think that it's okay. It needs to be approved. It needs, and if you don't have approval, you need to get a variance, and, and that's just the way our code book is set up. Now we'll take comments.
Oh, okay. Carrie Henderson? About two minutes, Carrie?
Don't start the clock yet.
I won't. One minute, wait, one minute, no.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification, because I think that addresses some of the issues in the letter that we drafted on behalf, I drafted on behalf of short-term rentals. I'm just gonna try to get a real, averaged version of that, of that letter. It was just, I'm thinking your sentence sort of addresses that, but this is all last-minute information. Yeah, so STR owners are concerned about the last-minute addition of the stipulation that no license will be granted should a neighboring property owner express concern in writing to the town. There's no mechanism for remedy, and that would open the way for arbitrary and frivolous objections from neighbors who may write to the town out of spite, or because they simply don't like STRs or their neighbor. As written, any abutting property owner has the power to deny the neighbor's ability. And just saying that that's an extraordinary power, and I think you have addressed that in what you said.
Right.
Okay. And the other thing was, the other main thing was about the zoning code, and we were just asking for clarification of what exactly that meant. I, I think you're addressing, which is very surprising, that zoning code actually popped up in the language of the law when it hadn't been there the whole way through until the very last minute, so...
Well, often, I, I think through the law, even when we put the sound issue in, or the parking issues, all those things are in our zoning code.
Right.
And, and we argued with whether to put them in there, even the inspections, whether to put them in there and state it, because it goes without saying. All that stuff goes with our zoning code. Anything you want to do with our zoning code has to follow those laws. It's just, we just like to not surprise people when they get upstairs with an application and go, "Oh, what do you mean, I can't do this?" Well, because you haven't done A, B, and C. That's, we just tried to make it more clear and more open by putting it in the code, even though it's redundant.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
And just to clarify, folks, this update on this was posted on the 24th of May on the STR page on the website, which is...
And...
Okay.
Yeah.
Alan? Do it, Moss.
Thank you. My name's Alan Dumas, I've spoken before, I'm a hard-time Shandaken resident, short-term rental owner.
Again, Lloyd?
As I said before, bears forward the regulations, it takes care of health and safety for rentals that basically fall below DOH thresholds, and you need to protect these non-standard rentals where there's building violations, or flood issues, or water issues, or sewer issues, what have you. I see there was a somewhat generic workup done for fees, I didn't get a chance to look at it yet, but I know that had come up the last meeting. I'll try to look at it and see, you know, if I have opinions on it. I mentioned this before, one of the concerns is, those of us who do have short-term rentals basically don't make any money off it, you put the money back into property, and looking at the fee schedule, taking a three-bedroom home, for example, it's about $400 for a resident, on the property about $800 per resident, not as a property about $1,000 for an out-of-town resident, the discrepancy continues to expand as you get more and more bedrooms. As I mentioned before, bears forward the regulations, as are many people I know, however, I have major concerns on the fees. Most of us that have second homes up here, we're using Airbnb to be able to welcome people in our homes, welcome people to town, introduce people to the area, and allow ourselves and our families to have a way to have a property to recreate on, and hopefully have future generations that can use, you know, use the home. Or, many of us have a desire to retire here in a couple of years. I've been coming here for 50 years, it provides me with a way to have a second home up here. I have multiple friends in Hurley, Marble Town, other locations in Ulster County that have second homes in Shandaken and surrounding towns. We're not real out-of-towners, and I've kind of expressed that before. I have ancestors buried in this town, and I've been, my family's been in the castles for over 175 years. I follow, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hank Williams?
My name is Hank Williams, I live in Woodland Valley. I think you all know how I feel about short-term rentals. I think the short-term rental community in itself doesn't realize that they're obviating the zoning codes and change of use, and that they're changing a residential neighborhood into a hotel-motel zone. I have a lot of issues with the license, but I know that we have to do something to try and regulate it. One of the issues is no more than 20 individuals at a party or gathering are short-term rental, and you do not count 16-year-olds and down. I went in the military when I was 17, my mother had assigned me, and I know 16, 17-year-olds, what they're capable of. So if you don't, it, I, I believe that it should be, the age should be lowered to 12-years-old and not 16-years-old. I think that's a little old to say that they're not part of the adult community, or the, that, that particular 20 people number. Also, the garbage thing, I guess if you have some sort of lock on the garbage can, it can stay out all week, because I don't see where it actually has to be removed from the municipal street and into your property, so...
It says it can only be out for 24-hour period.
Okay, that's clarified, and that's okay.
Right.
Other than that, I do believe that the short-term rental community needs to be licensed. As far as the fees go, I do agree a little bit with the, with the unbalance in the fees, but I also disagree with short-term rentals in our neighborhood. As a matter of fact, in the last three weeks, three houses in my neighborhood went up for sale, one was sold, one just went up today, two went up today, and another one went up three weeks ago. So, in our little neighborhood, and they, they explained to me that they don't want to live in a hotel zone, or motel zone, or a revolving door. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's worth quickly, I don't know if it's worth quickly clarifying, but what we have in there is that individuals under the age of 16, 16 or under, are not counted for the standpoint of occupancy, as in there's a maximum occupancy, but when it comes to gatherings, it's a gathering or party of 20 or more persons. So by my reading of it...
Yeah.
Individuals of any age would fall under the, the party limit. It's 16 and under is only a limitation on the occupancy. So the short version of this is, I, I think your, your initial concern there is actually addressed within the text.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robert.
Bob McConner?
I live down the road here on 28. I did have a zoning question, but I think you cleared it up a little earlier, that buildings before 1976 are kind of grandfathered in, is that correct?
In, in some manners.
Okay.
I mean, there, there is definitely going to be an inspection, but you won't be held to the same standards as a building that's built after '76.
Okay. My other question is about there, it says only one short-term rental license will be issued for a property. If there's more than one building that is being used as a short-term rental, does that fall under the bedroom clause, or does that...
Bedroom clause.
Okay. So if there's, if there's two properties, one bedroom in each property, I only need one license?
Right.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Philip Monet?
Good evening, everybody, Phil Moss, I'm out of New York. I've been coming up here, like I said, for the last 55 years, plus or minus a few. In any event, the fact that there really have been relatively few answers regarding the fee schedule and the expenditures, I find slightly unconscionable. I really have questioned if this is the way things are really running in this town. Town of Andy's just set up a fee schedule for their short-term rentals. It's about a third of what we have here. Somewhere, there seems to be some inequities in the way either things are run here, or the way things are run over in the town of Andy's. I have to really question it. You know, and if it's the way things are run in this town, it becomes a serious concern. Okay? It sounds like it's wasteful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Phil.
James Cop? Coke?
James Coke, 30, East Opus Avenue. Thank you for the clarification on those two points, Peter. And I just want to say that after the first year of paying fees, I don't see, you're already on the system, you've already been inspected, I don't understand, like the other town did, they paid 300 the first year, then 100 for every year after that. I really recommend, as a way of addressing this fee issue, is that subsequent to the first year, when you renew, drop the fee, because it's not going to cost the town as much to do that. And so it really makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Jeff Conosse, Conosse?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you, Jeff. Karen Sharman. Karen Sharman.
I live on Broad Street Hollow, and I just have a question, clarification. So, our house is obviously older than 1972, but we have a yurt which is not older than '72. We made sure that we consulted with the building inspector here to make sure it was okay, that we didn't need permits and everything. So now that the zoning code is part of this, I'm wondering if we're going to be subject to some other kind of standard than what we were told, which was that it was okay to go ahead and build that. And I guess I'm asking also for any other people who have structures that were built, other things on their property that are newer than 1972, that got the go-ahead before this law?
The go-ahead, it, the, the building inspections are different for places that are built prior to the zoning code, because they were built prior to a zoning code...
Right.
And a building code. So they're given some leniency. If you're built after the adoption of the zoning code, everything that's built after the adoption of the zoning code has to meet a higher standard. It should have been, when it was built, inspected. We're mostly focused here on, on permanent structures. We, we haven't really addressed a temporary structure like a yurt, or a, or a camper, or a, or a boat as a place for people to overnight, or, so, right now, we really haven't touched on it.
Okay.
So if the, the building inspector, zoning officer told you, you can put a yurt on your property, I'm not sure, I mean, he wasn't speaking about whether it can accommodate...
Well, he, he knew that it was specifically for short-term rental, so we were very, very clear about that.
Okay.
Okay.
But, well, I, we haven't decided yet as a board...
Okay.
What we're going to do with temporary structures.
Okay.
I mean, they're really...
I guess something to think about, because I'm sure that we're not the only people in this position.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I just know when, when people start putting a camper on their property, if there's one camper on your property, and, and the use of a camper on your property is for, generally for storage, and it has to be moved 100, every 180 days, that's the stipulation of having a camper. If you have more than one camper, you're, you're almost turning into a campsite.
Right.
And to be a campsite, you need 20 acres.
Yeah, no, we don't, and we're not planning on it, but...
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it for the list.
All right, it's open mic night here at Town of Shandaken. Anybody else want to speak?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Joyce, when did you say that...
My phone, my phone, man? 24th? That's where you'll find it, STR page?
Yeah.
The updated, when you go in, the updated one should be there.
Yeah.
Yep, when you click on the law, it should be this one with the dark font with all the changes.
Before we take any more comments, what do you guys think of the new addition for C?
I support that addition.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's clarifying.
Kevin, did you see it?
Yeah, I thank you for the clarification, and I think that kind of covers our basis.
Yeah, Ellen came up with that.
Yeah, it covers our basis, the one we were talking about, neighbor concerns, so...
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Oh, it's there.
It's not on, is there a, is there a copy of the law down there?
The law? Yeah.
There, there was.
There was, I have one, do you need another one?
I got one.
There you go, hold up.
I got it here, too.
I can do Ctrl F if you specifically look for something. No, no, I, I thought I put something in, but I'm wondering what you guys think of the idea of no new, remember we threw that out there, no new residences?
Did that not make it in the law?
That's if not, maybe.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, that didn't make it.
Yeah, well, proof of a one-year ownership of a property.
Yeah, but no after that, like any new, new residences...
Oh.
That are built after the... Does anybody have a, it's probably too late...
I can find it.
It's probably too late to add that in.
I wouldn't.
That didn't make the revision.
No, that's...
Never mind that.
Do you want to do another public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Fight your talk, slam.
I want to do it again.
No, never...
Yeah, well, it didn't, it didn't get in, okay.
What was the actual verdict?
My bad. Next time.
Well, they say, like, too late. What's the question? Mr. Question?
Everybody standing up there, please ask a question.
Ask your question.
And good night, everybody.
Good night.
Yeah, jump up there.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gross, I live on Snowy Brook Lane, and I've also been up here for over 50 years, my life and family. We have a piece of property out on 214, where we had a camper for years. Stayed there, now ultimately we came up and bought a piece of property. I have a separate short-term rental, and a main house that's, that's longer. My question is, I'm currently renting a short-term rental. When these laws go into effect, or the application process begins, how long a grace period will there be, where, you know, where you can continue to rent your property until a license is approved, or the inspection is done? I wouldn't expect that you would want, you know, the minute this law goes into effect, everybody's got to stop renting until...
No, no, nobody's going to have to stop renting.
Right.
You know, it's going to take, it's going to take about three weeks before it goes to the Department of State, gets approved there, it always gets approved, and then comes back. So we're assuming that we'll have our ducks in a row, and on our website, an application that will be downloadable and to do then.
We, we called it out. 3A1 says a lot, and then it says, within 90 days after the effective date of this law, you have to apply.
You have to apply.
Apply. We're not putting it on you, how long it takes us to get through the applications.
Okay, so I apply, give you my application, it takes six months for you to get it inspected or approved.
Right.
Continue business as you do.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you've applied within 90 days.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I knew we had it somewhere.
We did, yeah.
And again, all that web, that is on the website, there's a pull-down or a press-on button for SDR info, and that's where all that'll be.
You got another question?
When will the application start? Can you email it or... When will the applications be available?
Right?
Probably by July 1st.
Applications we got, when do they go up? After the law passes, right?
Well, it's not, they're state, you get a church...
Yeah, once it's passed, yeah, so a few weeks.
Yes.
Can you just verify for me the number of short-term rented units that you're going to allow for non-Shandaken residents? I would be a couple of different...
There's a cap of 150 of non-resident STRs.
And I also see in another flyer I was reading, it was saying 10%. Is that something that...
That was the recommendation from the STR committee for the last year, when they came and gave us the recommendation, 10% was the number, and what that works out to be is 150.
And that's of the total residents in Shandaken, so it's 1,500 homes, is that how you...
Exactly how we did it, right.
Do you have any idea on how many there are now presently?
Very close to that number.
That are not residents?
That are not residents.
Okay, so you're, you're close to getting them, but...
Right.
Because, you know, my concern is, I'm outside of Shandaken, I have a short-term rental, and want to know, you know, what the odds are of being bumped down, and being there for a year or so, you kind of feel like...
We don't know the exact number, we're guessing it's around 130, 140, but it could be 20 or 30 more than that, that, that we've missed.
So then there's a possibility that everybody who's operating now could ultimately be approved?
There's, there's a possibility.
Okay.
You think it grows all around, or...
Then you're on a waiting list.
And it's on a first-come, first-served basis.
What if you're, what if you live in the bottom, not Trump, but at Woodstock?
Then you go to Woodstock.
No, no, but the, my address and property is here in Shandaken, not Trump, at the other end of Trump.
What's your address?
Am I considered local or not local?
It'll be not local, no.
Wait, no, if you live in...
You're saying that your STR is within the boundaries of Shandaken, but your residence is not, it's in Woodstock?
It's Mount Trump, but yeah...
The Woodstock part of Mount Trump, as opposed to the Olive part of Mount Trump, or the Phoenisha part of Trump.
Shandaken, right.
You know, give some leeway to people who are in all of, all of the, 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 the Woodstock.
The leeway is we let you open an STR.
So if it's not in the...
You, you live closer, you'll be able to apply easier?
You can run right up.
We think there's more than enough right now, so it shouldn't be a problem.
I have a clarifying question. So in general, operator of a short-term rental, pretty recently started, totally support the law, definitely support regulation and standards. I want people here to come and have a good time, I want myself to be protected as a property owner. My one kind of concern or question is, I guess, also about the residency requirement. I'm kind of young, I'm like a hippie, I don't really live anywhere, I don't really have an address, per se, I mean, I file taxes with my parents' house, where I haven't been in two years. I spend a lot of time in a camper, I have two properties here locally, I spend some time in a short-term rental when it's available, and I spend a lot of time in other countries or states. So, you know, I could apply with my parents' address, however, like, it feels a little discriminatory, and kind of puts an incentive on me to, like, change my residency over to the STR, and like, some time pressure to do that. Just complaining, I don't really have any proposed action, I think.
Thank you for that.
Maybe if the fees were a little lower, I wouldn't have to go to the DMV, and like, that would be nice, but like, yeah, I don't know, to me, like, the concept of having an address is a little bit complicated, so, just wanted to put that out there.
Did you get that, Chad?
Chad, Chad's not a secret. That's my neighbor.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe.
That's not a secret.
Just, just a short question?
Yes.
I, I hear a lot of people talking about the zoning codes, and how the zoning codes is going to affect their house, what they have now personally, that they're renting under the STR. But if they're renting for the general public, do they not have to abide by certain health code rules that hotels, motels have to abide by when they rent to the general public?
There's two schools of thought on that, but our, our attorney leans more towards it's a home business type of business, even though it's, it's open to the public, it has to be inspected, but it doesn't have to be inspected every year, every three years is fine. It, it, if it has more than four rooms, it should, they should get a water test, and that's the only real regulation that Ulster County puts out there. We're not enforcing the water test rule, but people should, if they have a residence more than four rooms, they should be understanding and get a water test, make sure that their water is, if they're outside the Phoenisha Water District, or the Pine Hill Water District, where it's tested all the time.
So the answer to that question is no?
Is no.
So the general public is...
It's, it's yes, correct. If someone gets ill from, from bad water, they write a bad review, if they figure it out. Yeah.
The actual code citation is Part 7-1 of the United States Statutory Code, it's N R R subpart 7-1, and it's 11 more people, not four bedrooms.
Not four bedrooms, it's 11 people.
If you're renting Airbnb to a group that's excluded from Temporary Residences Code...
Okay.
If you're renting for in excess of 8 days, it's excluded. So if anyone has any interest, what you would do is go to the web, try United States Statutory Code, Part 7-1 Temporary Residences, that would be sure the difference in regulations.
How many pages? Anyone can read your words on that. In succession? Second page?
I can hear you. All right, if there are no more questions, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Mike, can I, so did we, did we, can you use the microphone?
Please, address the board.
Nobody can hear anybody, and they'll...
Nobody can hear anything in the audience.
I'm just a little concerned because our, a property right next to me, twenty feet away, has a pool and a big house and a little cabin, and I just, I wanted to make sure. So, did we come up with a decision about how many people are allowed? Is it twenty people?
It's still twenty people.
We didn't change that.
We did not. Did we want to change that?
Because that's what was mentioned, to change or to talk about the change of...
Well, we, nobody was very...
I'm scared that this is, the pool is right there, a three-bedroom house and a cabin on the same lot, twenty feet away from my house, and twenty people potentially, and that's not including sixteen or under, correct?
Oh, it includes everyone.
It includes children, too?
Includes children, too.
Twenty persons, not twenty persons over sixteen.
Still even twenty people with a pool party every weekend. I mean, I don't, I don't know what this is going to be.
Has it been a problem before?
It's, no, it's for sale right now. It's just one on the market because, and they're selling it for one point one point five, I have something million, you know, because of the increase of, you know, they, they're too tempted not to sell it, you know? It's like, this is...
So, again, we, 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 we address that kind of, you know, with a, a butter's complaints. We have to take them into account, but really unless somebody is, is breaking a law.
I understand.
You know, if, if they're, if it's so loud...
When we purchased this property, we, there was no Airbnb.
Uh, yes.
We didn't expect this to happen. We had neighbors and, you know, it's like now we have this... And we have another neighbor that just sold the property because the Airbnb people came into our house.
One, one bit of the, the text of the law that is worth probably reiterating here. So, for a gathering, it's a maximum of twenty, as in perhaps a party in the evening or something like that. But the short-term rental will allow a maximum occupancy of two guests per bedroom. Children under the age of sixteen are not to be counted as occupants. So, the number of folks who'd be expected to stay overnight would be the number of bedrooms in that parcel.
Three bedrooms and two bedrooms, so five bedrooms.
So that's ten people.
So that would be ten people in, in...
And then they could have...
And they have ten guests come home.
If you're sixteen-year-old and under, you're not counted.
No, you are, just for overnight.
For, for, for purposes of occupancy.
For overnight, but for the party, you're counted.
For the party, you're counted, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Every, the littlest, the littlest.
So, it's just like this, when we have these, we're in Woodland Valley and clustered. I mean, we're so close, when Helen Back built these cabins, he wasn't expecting Airbnb and all this stuff. It was like hunting cabins and was, you know.
I get it, I get it.
And now it's become like a resort completely.
I get it.
And I wish that there was a way that with the areas that are more like, you know, close together, that they could have different rules about how many people, how many Airbnbs. This whole, all of Woodland Valley has been sold now to Airbnbs, and that's sad.
The whole town. That's why we're creating this law to try and control the amount.
When it is sold, they will not be able to operate as an STR until they've owned it for a year, which we hope will discourage out-of-town investors repaying. That's, that's just one, that's one thing.
But the thing is, is that...
No, hang on. Number two, if there's two people there creating a public disturbance, we don't need an STR law to deal with that. We already have laws that you can already call the Shandaken Police if you have a serious disturbance complaint.
Disturbance, it's screaming in the pool.
Well...
Having fun in the pool every weekend, I mean...
Well, I don't think we can make any legal...
No, of course you can. And I'm, 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 I was, I was, I didn't think I was buying the property right next to a potential weekend party, you know?
I get it, but it could be a private, it could have also, it could stay a private residence and not go on Airbnb, and they could still have parties of twenty and yelling and screaming in the pool.
Private residence, they can have a party of a hundred.
No, they don't, no, I mean...
Oh, I've been to parties up here. Yeah, I've been to parties up here. By residence, that's...
Whatever it is, it's just changing, you know, and it's scary.
Thank you.
But, but also the thing about the year...
Ding, ding, ding.
I didn't put her on time.
Okay.
Time is up.
Ding, ding, ding.
But it takes a year for them to renovate.
Thank you for your comment.
There's no red line.
Yes, it is, thank you.
A, a short one, please. A short comment.
But the thing is, we're not here, it feels like most people...
What's your name, please?
Oh, Gail Margulis, Woodland Valley, Woodland.
Okay.
It feels like most people are here to support their Airbnb, and that's good. I mean, whatever, I understand that. But we're trying to say it from a perspective, nobody here is trying to say, but from a perspective of literally, in our neighborhood, like, five different people now have turned into Airbnbs and other people are coming. Why do you sigh? Because the thing, the point is...
No, we understand, we understand.
You do?
We all...
But then why did nothing change? Why did nothing change? Because we were here in those meetings.
Did nothing change? Well, this is a change. We're making a law that we didn't have ever.
No, I understand that.
And, and we, we had, we had two, we had two committees offer us recommendations after dozens of meetings.
Were they not STR committees?
They were STR committee meetings, not with STR people.
They weren't run by people who owned STRs, no.
No, they weren't.
In fact, that man sitting next to you in the front row was on the committee.
I know that, but he didn't stay.
There were only two STR owners on the committee. They're both here tonight as well.
Oh, okay.
But there were only two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The rest were hotel and motel owners or just like Hank, citizens, yeah.
Okay.
We understand.
I just wanted to be on record because when we moved and everybody, you know, you'll see, well, not that we're going to be a big loss, but the point is, Phoenicia is choosing to go a certain way, it's becoming a resort, and that's what you're choosing.
We understand.
But some of us, that is not cool, and I don't want Airbnb because of that, even though we could.
We understand, we understand. Airbnbs only account for fifteen percent of our housing. And they...
You can have too many if you want, if they're local.
As, as, yes, but currently, currently, yes.
So, it's easy to go low.
Thank you.
Microphone.
One last one.
Step right up to it, so I can hear you.
We will have open comment.
I had, I had suggested Vivian Welton, Plank Road, Shandaken, Phoenicia. I had mentioned the possibility of putting into the STR law a prohibition against STRs in multifamily units, multifamily apartment buildings, in other words. I think it was like five or five or more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, we, I tried to address it with the attorney, and it just seemed like a whole other convoluted, complicated thing. Already, generally, people with five or more units go and get a special use permit or either a, a housing development of some kind or some other thing. It's, it's just right now, maybe when we revisit the law, which we will in either, you know, six months to a year, to make some adjustments, perhaps we'll figure out a way to do it that won't be so complicated.
Okay, just wondering what happens to that idea.
Yep. Thank you, okay, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and now we'll open up our regular town board meeting. Let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member Drake?
Here.
Board member Nysel?
Here.
Board member Steen?
Here.
Board member Van Barker?
Here.
Supervisor Deucepani?
Here. Make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisors report, May twenty twenty-two. Sell tower rental, six hundred and fifty dollars. Franchise fees, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Vital statistics, eighty dollars. Ambulance fees, ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Town clerk fees, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Planning board fees, five hundred and fifty dollars. Police fees, sixty dollars. Building permit fees, eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Dog license, forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Zoning fees, two hundred dollars. Highway revenues, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Justice fees, six thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Real property tax, five hundred thousand, thirty-three, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Stumpage fees, sixteen hundred dollars. Heritage donations, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a grand total of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. This month, we're looking to pass our STR law again, plus the attendant fee structure. We're also have summer recreation going forward this year, starting July fifth, headed by the very able Manny Lapierre. We will be rehiring she and a support staff this month, as well as setting up contracts with Orda and UCAT for transportation to and from camp, the beach and field trips. We're still diligently working on getting a stormwater retrofit system in Pine Hill, but that needs yet another engineering study for a grant application to be complete. At this point, we are looking at the Pine Hill Firehouse property. We are also bringing up the Pine Hill Fire Department into a mutual aid agreement with Ulster County Department of Emergency Services. Once again, we're looking in, investigating the idea of moving town hall and highway garage complexes out of the flood zone. DEP has offered a five-acre parcel just east of the town hall property on twenty-eight. We'll have to do a feasibility study and find money to build these facilities. I'll keep you all posted with updates. This can take some time. Lastly, we are protesting NICE Egg raising rates as drastically as they did since last December. We have a resolution stating such and a petition here, as well as on our website for residents to sign.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
After the resolution.
We'll have it up online.
It'll be on Facebook also.
Okay. Do we have the petition here?
No. Who writes on a petition?
Okay, okay, online, on the website.
Yeah. I'll have them in my office after tomorrow.
Okay. Communications, Joyce?
Uh, so the big news, for all the people that called last month and the month before, the Town of Shandaken metal pickup will be, the Town of Shandaken Highway will be doing their yearly metal pickup starting Monday, June thirteenth, next Monday. And will proceed through Thursday, the sixteenth. You may start placing your metal out the weekend before, but please, and this is all in caps, from Kara, do not place metal out before Saturday, June eleventh. Pickup begins on the west end of town. Highmountain proceeds to east Mount Trumper. Metal only, no household garbage, mattresses, toilets, we've seen it. Latex, oil-based paint cans, oxygen tanks, or anything under pressure, and yes, that includes propane tanks. Please be mindful of where you're placing items and do not block any public or town accessways. If you miss it, we will not come back. Should, it's so threatening. Should you need anything further, have any questions about pickup, please call Kara at eight four five six eight eight five oh three one and her home number, no, and that's it. That's the big news. There's nothing else going on. Everything is posted on our website at the bottom of the page and our Facebook page with upcoming events. shandaken.us.
Thank you, Joyce. Committee reports.
I didn't get a museum.
Mr. Muller-Lilly? Oh, you have a report?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay. May twenty twenty-two report for the Town of Shandaken Ambulance. Total calls received, thirty-two. Mutual aid given to Town of Olive, mutual aid received, zero. Anyone that has been on Route twenty-eight or traveled through one of our Hamlet Centers in the past two weeks will know that our tourist season is in full swing. As this bring many, brings many benefits to the town, the increased transient traffic brings a heightened risk for motor vehicle accidents, and particularly automobile, pedestrian, and automobile bicycle accidents. According to the CDC, more than seven thousand pedestrians lost their lives on roadways in the year twenty twenty. That's one auto pedestrian death every seventy-five minutes. As we have been very fortunate over the past couple of years, there have been quite a few instances of auto pedestrian accidents over the past ten years here in town, with some resulting in poor patient prognosis. Be sure to have a heightened awareness while driving through the Ham, through Hamlet Centers on busy weekends, and if out on the road, be sure to walk on the sidewalk or path instead of the road. Walk on the shoulder and facing traffic if a sidewalk or path is not available. Also, consider avoiding the utilization of electronic devices like earbuds, which can cause distractions while walking. If walking at night, increase your visibility by carrying a flashlight and wearing bright reflective clothing. COVID update, as of June fifth, there are no active cases of COVID in the Town of Shandaken. Total cumulative cases in the town since the beginning of the pandemic have reached three hundred and twenty-seven, with three hundred and twenty-six recovered. There is still only, only one fatality accounted for in the town. There are two hundred and sixty active cases of COVID in Ulster County, with cumulative cases in the county reaching forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventeen. There are a total of three hundred and eighty-four cumulative fatalities since the beginning of the pandemic in the county, and a total of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three individuals recovered. Stay safe out there. Richard Muller-Lilly, Chief of Department, Shandaken Ambulance.
Thanks, Kyle. Grace? You have a report? Yes. Have anything you want to say? Been... Okay, thank you. Chad?
Hi, everybody, I see a lot of faces in here that I recognize, so I'm Chad, sorry, I'm here to receive. Two hundred and fourteen calls per service this month and, uh, for arrest. But more importantly, Joyce forgot to mention that the...
Oh.
First, first annual full pet non-oral arrest, both from, is June twentieth, the Christmas window. It was formerly for the last ten years, and my dad, Eleanor Bruce Story, who was a town employee here for a number of years before he passed away. So, we're now transitioning over to full pet non-oral arrest. Golf at Christmas on the twentieth, June twentieth, you can contact me for, uh, J. McGrath.
Thank you.
And if you want to play, it's a hundred twenty-five dollars for golf, eighteen holes of golf, lunch, and then dinner in the Phoenician hours. And all money goes back to local area sports. Thanks.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Usually, uh, not just because I'm on the work side, it's usually pretty, it's a fun day, and it's great success.
Alfred or Rick, anybody want to talk about Phoenicia Water?
Well, I just want to talk about that pump that happened to be brought to, uh, Poughkeepsie, and I had no way of getting it there. My truck is almost dead, and I understand that the town highway pump has two trucks up there. It's not working. So, uh, you know, I want to get that down as soon as possible and get it fixed and brought back. I only have one pump here.
Anybody out there want to rent Rick a truck for the day? Bring a motor down to Poughkeepsie? Three hundred and fifty pounds, it's got to be a big truck.
My Subaru will take that. You don't have a truck?
He does, but it's not a... You won't want to put a hundred and fifty pounds in it. Nothing else to report, Rick? There any breakages or any pipes leaking?
We put a new engine home by Wayne Benjamin's. Somebody backed into that corner there, and they told me that shouldn't really be there. Unbelievable. I'll be replaced that and, uh, what else? The other pump that I need is in the, in the pump house. And, you know, we need that pump ASAP, but if that goes, I'll be blamed for not having any water.
We have a grant in with Ulster County, we'll see. Cross our fingers, knock on wood.
About eight trillion dollars that they had moved around, where is that money?
We're looking, we're looking. Under every piece of paper, it's there somewhere. Thank you, Rick. Uh, Pine Hill Water, anybody here from Pine Hill Water?
Museum now.
Museum.
Yeah, just a message.
I do not have a museum report.
No. No.
I was shown, uh, pictures of Vinnie's new, uh, handrail around, and it's very nice. So, we applaud you, Vinnie Sorvelini.
All right, um, Kevin?
Uh, we actually have representation for Parks and Rec. Thank you for getting it on the agenda.
So you like that?
Uh, I thought I saw Gail or Sam.
Gail or Gail here.
Yeah, okay, come on up, so they can hear you.
Hi, everyone. Gail Alwah. We have, we had, oh, told you. We had our meeting last month over at Glenbrook Park, and, um, we had Kevin Van Blark in there, myself, John Mcilady, and Samantha Awari-Cortell. Two others couldn't make it, but hopefully this coming month they will. We went over the park manager's responsibility, and we're saying, we're going to have recurring park meetings from now, from May through September, and we'll alternate the meetings at each park. This way, all managers can see the parks and see what needs to be done, and we can brainstorm on it. Scheduling a park event, say if somebody wants to have a birthday party or a family reunion, they do need to let the town know. So, they should contact our town clerk, Joyce Brand, to reserve the space at any of the Shandaken parks. They could go on shandakenclerk@yahoo.com, include their name, date, number of people. Any event over five hundred people will need a permit. Now, Parish Field is run by Aysin, and she has been a dynamo, I mean, like a dynamo. She, um, she's sending prices out for new basketball hoop nets, looking for donations to seal, which I believe
That's taking care of all of those.
Yeah, um, she got that donated to seal the
Oh, the basketball?
The basketball court. So, we just need the new court lines to be sprayed and painted. The tree line, she wanted to See, dynamo.
She's young.
I know.
She's young, yeah, I'm not painting lines.
And the tree limbs, what about the tree limbs above? Great, those, um, above the kids' slides, they need trimming. Now, we're looking into new additions to the playground. Look at, we're look at what the town hall, well, the town has, because we got them years ago. And maybe new swing set, bouncy frog and squirrel, possibly the right rock climbing wall. And, um, what Sam was suggesting is possible concerts like the Big Indian in the summer. And, um, it'll be free, it would be free to those that attend. And we're trying to get money together to pay the band. But a lot of bands do it for free, um, and she already checked on the electricity, we have, we have that set. I don't know. Okay, now to Glenbrook Park. New park signs and, and rules are going to be put up. Town, the town is paying for this. Plaque, plaque listings of all individual donors for the dog park fencing. These are signs for donations over five hundred dollars for the dog park fencing. Will hang on the inside of the fencing, facing the road, so they're visible to cars passing, as well as the people inside the park. Now, at Glenbrook Park is also the Little League Field. Town has paid for new dirt and sand for the field. The Little League coordinators and parents take care of the maintenance of the field and the restrooms that are down, um, where they can get to, as well as the snack bar. When in need of something, they approach the town and see how they can help, such as tree removal if, um, a tree comes down, things like that. Uh, Smith Park, exciting news, getting, which looks like we're getting a pickleball court. Um, we do need a pickleball, a pickleball netting, and a four-foot fence around it, and then we can paint the lines on it. I'm not sure about the surfacing, it's a little rough. But, um, Big Indian Park, they have started their concert series on Memorial Day. They run four, four Sundays in the summer. And John Mcilady knows of some bands, but if anybody has bands that are interested, please let him know. And it is once again free to the attendants. Um, we are looking for grant writing. We're searching for grants that will accomplish what the parks wants and needs are, and see if the following individuals might be able to help, or anybody else that really loves grant writing.
More than happy to help, I, I don't, I don't know any grants offhand for that, although I immediately haven't looked, but I'm happy to help with the preparation of any.
Tannersville got a great one, I'm going to research that.
Yeah, if you happen to, feel free to send me whatever, whatever grant program that happened to have been.
Great, and possibly, if you're listening, Jane Todd and Marty, I know you've got a lot of their grants, so. You want to keep your hands up. Okay, and what's coming up in September is a metal detecting group. John Mcilady is, is the one who's letting us know about it. It's called the Nor'easters. They are, they come and they do metal detecting around, around the northeast, and they find a lot of very interesting things each year. So, if anyone knows of someone that would like their property to be metal detected, you, they do give it back, or I believe they may pay, don't let, but anybody that wants to do it, please contact John.
I lost a set of keys in my backyard. I know they're there somewhere.
I know those are historic. Our next meeting will be on Monday, June 13th, at the Parish Field at 6:00 PM.
Thanks, Gail.
And just, in addition, that meeting is open to the public, so anybody that wants to come and talk to us or has ideas, feel free to come. In addition, uh, the Emerson is looking to renew our lease with Emerson Fields, uh, happily, so they're preparing that for us for next month.
Great, great. The pickleball, tell me more about that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not a pickleball player, but it's sort of like tennis, except not at all, with a wiffle ball and a badminton racket.
It's like slow motion tennis.
But with, with the fence not being around the Smith Park Tennis Court, we can stake it while, you know, the idea for that town is still to raise money for a skate park, but we can stake a four-foot garden fence.
Okay.
And put lines down and have it be functional.
A snow fence.
Exactly.
Four-foot fence, and the net can be moved, you don't have to get a permanent net, that can be rolled on and off.
All right.
And it's really a growing sport, it's, it's between tennis and really ping pong. And anybody from eight to, I play with people that are eighty-five.
So you made your pickleball first.
Yeah.
No, I thought you got pickled.
There's a real thing on the song.
Okay. All right. Mr. Bernstein, would you like to speak?
Yeah, um, you know, the W R I F S F T, uh, our community post nine fifty, and of course, the town board to announce the, uh, July 4th parade we're having in Phoenicia. It's going to be obviously on July 4th, through Monday this year, uh, we will be meeting up at the Phoenician School. Uh, any businesses or, uh, organizations are more than, uh, pulling out of float, there's a hundred-dollar, uh, prize for the best float. There's also, uh, classic cars are, are invited, there's a hundred-dollar prize for the justice choice of, of classic cars. Any groups like, uh, soccer teams, uh, baseball teams, BTA, whatever.
Short-term rental group. Does she carry a house down Main Street?
Yeah.
That would be a temporary structure.
So, uh, you know, like I said, it's always invited. Joyce has chosen that the town board will approve it.
It's, well, it's going to be approved tonight, we'll see. You never know, you never know. And the banner, uh, well, I'm so sure of it, that the banner's going up this week, Kurt finished the banner, it looks beautiful, it looks just like the poster. So, it'll be down on the billboard.
We, uh, previous years, we had, uh, family as a supervisor for the MC down there, and, uh, Pete graciously accepted to do it again, or do it this year.
No speeches.
It will, uh, it will be up at the, uh, Phoenician School between, uh, ten and ten-thirty, you know, where their numbers, their IDs, et cetera. And we will kick off at eleven o'clock, parade will go down, uh, two fourteen, uh, take a left on Main Street, go through the reviewing stand, and end up in the, uh, Parish Field. I believe Samantha is trying to get some, uh, organizations, nonprofits together down at the Parish Field. Previous years, we just ended there, that was, that was the end of it there. I think, uh, Sam's trying to get some, uh, nonprofits down here to, uh, put on events for kids, uh, from eight to eighty, doing, uh, whatever we're going to say we'd like to do, to try to get some fundraisers going to their organization. So, I guess that would help them to appreciate it.
Thanks, Vin.
Okay, one other thing, too, uh, we have the American Legion Post nine fifty, uh, Flag Day is, uh, June fourteenth. Uh, the school, Phoenician School advisory, that they're not going to have a kind of program for that this year due to, uh, school policy, but if you have any soil flags or, uh, one American flag, if you need, uh, this card, uh, from down at the box in American Legion Post, I don't know, we'll do the virtual flag burning, uh, in the afternoon.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Sam, did you want?
So, after the parade, we'll have at the Parish Field, again, trying to get some of the nonprofit organizations to help themselves raise some funds by doing things like, um, carnival kind of games, you know, throw balloons at a dart, uh, darts at a balloon, or, sorry. And you win a prize, something small, like relay races, we do have, um, the obvious cooking again, is a barbecue, um, that they've done for our scarecrow contest in October, in our Phoenician Sunday, they'll be there, we're looking for somebody to play some great, like, upbeat rock kind of music. Um, Cornell will be there, um, and just, again, it should be a really good time, because usually the parade just ends, and there's all these spectators, and we'd like to have everyone kind of follow us into the Parish Field and have a good time, so. If anyone's interested in setting up a booth for any sort of nonprofit organization, or does it, you know, like, uh, state with a Shandaken animal volunteer?
Effort.
The road re, the little legion auxiliary, um, pantry, food pantry, community farmers market, so, um, you can contact me on the day, pretty much every day. So, you can come see me, I'll just say everything, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Sam. All right, um, public comments on resolutions. And that's
I have one question regarding retirement appeals. I just got a text today about my calendar, so I know where you got them from.
Amy did it, I don't know.
Amy said she'd be addressed it after, because she couldn't, you know, she tried to get hold of you a few times.
Yeah. Just wanted to keep you in there.
It's in document form, so we could
Uh, a bit of housekeeping, um, uh, motion. I make a motion to have the Town of Shandaken officially recognize Juneteenth as a holiday, as it is for New York State and Ulster County, it's a matter of our contracts and whatnot that we have to do that. Second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, on to resolutions.
Resolution seventy-six twenty-two, resolution to pay all bills. Whereas the Department of Audit and Control require town boards to sign and inspect all vouchers coming into town for payment to number in total amounts from each fund, therefore, be it resolved, if the town board authorized the following vouchers paid. General, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, ninety-two cents. Highway, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, forty-seven cents. Phoenicia Water, five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, sixty-seven cents. Pine Hill Water, eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Phoenicia Lights, one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-two cents. Chichester Lights, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, twenty-nine cents. Pine Hill Lights, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, sixty-two cents. Shandaken Septic, zero, for a total of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and five cents, and move its adoption.
Second?
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nisel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blark?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scopani?
Yes. Hold that note. I'm going to do, uh
You have your form?
I have my form for a the short environmental assessment form, uh, for the law, the new law. It's under Town of Shandaken, Local Law Two of two thousand twenty-two, short-term rental law, Shandaken, New York. Brief description, it's based on the town board review and public comments, this law will have no significant adverse environmental impact. We are the sponsor and applicant. Number four is a rural place. Number five, the proposed action is permitted in zoning regulations, yes. Proposed actions consistent with predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, yes. Is the site proposed a location, does it adjoin state-listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of proposed action? No. Are the pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near site of the proposed action? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the energy code? Not applicable. Will the proposed action connect to existing public or private water? Not applicable. Will the proposed action connect existing water utilities? Not applicable. Does the site contain structure that's listed on either state, national register, or historic places? No. Is the proposed action located in an ar- archeological sensitive area? No. Does any portion of the site of proposed action or lands adjoining to proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or a local agency? No. Will the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? If yes, identify? No. Identify the typical habitat that occurs on? Not applicable. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of action? Not applicable. Is the project site located in the Hodgynier flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create a stormwater discharge either from point or non-point of sources? No. Will the stormwater discharges flow adjacent properties? No. Will the stormwater discharges be directed into a conveyance system or runoff drain? No. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities result in the impoundment of water or other liquids, retention ponds, waste lagoons, dam? No. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been located of an act, active, closed, solid waste management facility? No. Has the site or proposed action or adjoining property been a subject of remediation, ongoing, or completed for hazardous waste? No. I affirm that. And a date, six, six, two thousand twenty-two. Will the proposed action create material conflict with adopted land use planning or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area, CEA? Will the proposed, no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and its fails to incorporate, incorporate reasonable, available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing, A, a public slash Will the proposed action impact existing, A, a public slash private water supplies, no. B, public, private water treatment utility, utilities, no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, archi- architectural or aesthetic resources, no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, water, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna, no. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding drainage problems, no. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources to human health, no. And I sign off. Thank you very much for that.
That's great.
You may continue.
Thank you. Resolution number seventy-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Resolution of the town board of the town of Shandaken determining that there are no adverse impacts on the environment for Local Law Number Two, twenty-twenty-two, Short Term Rental Law. Whereas the town board is looking to adopt Local Law Number Two dash twenty-twenty-two, Short Term Rental Law. Whereas the possible environmental impacts of this approval of the Short Term Rental Law have been considered by the town board, now therefore be it resolved that the town board has determined that the approval of Local Law Number Two of two thousand twenty-two, Short Term Rental Law, will not have significant adverse impacts in the environment and be it further resolved that the town board authorizes the supervisor to take such further steps as might be necessary to discharge the board's responsibility as lead agency for this action, including, but not limited to, the issuance of negative declaration consistent with this resolution.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes. Resolution seventy-eight, twenty-twenty-two. Resolution, Local Law Two of twenty-two, Short Term Rental Law. Whereas an introductory law, Number Two of two thousand twenty-two, entitled Short Term Rentals, was introduced before the town board of the town of Shandaken on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Upon notice duly published and posted, public hearings were held on May second and June sixth, two thousand twenty-two, before the town board. And whereas the public discussion was heard as su- at such hearings concerning the merits and environmental significance of said introductory law, be it resolved that the adoption of the introductory law entitled Short Term Rentals is a secret unlisted action and is determined not to have a significant effect on the environment. Be it further resolved that introductory law entitled Short Term Rentals of the town of Shandaken be and is hereby adopted as a Local Law Number Two of twenty-two, the town of Shandaken, May, June sixth? Two thousand twenty-two, and I move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-nine dash twenty-two. Resolution, Town of Shandaken Town Board Establishment of Fees Regarding Short Term Rentals. Whereas the town's Short Term Rentals Local Law authorizes the town board by resolution to establish related fees and to amend those fees from time to time, therefore it is resolved that the following application license fees are established. Short term rental fees, one-time application, one hundred and fifty dollars, non-refundable. Annual license for primary owners, one bedroom, three hundred dollars, each additional bedroom, fifty dollars. For secondary owners, one bedroom, four hundred dollars, each additional bedroom, two hundred dollars. For non-resident owners, one bedroom, five hundred dollars, each additional bedroom, two hundred and fifty dollars, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution, oh, I'm sorry, it's-
Kyle. No, that's all right, hey, you can read it if you want.
Kyle.
Resolution number twenty-two, eighty-twenty-two. Appoint C A C Chair and Climate Smart Community Coordinator. Whereas under Section Twenty of the town law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town. Therefore be it resolved that Beth Waterman be appointed as Town of Shandaken Chairperson of the Conservation Advisory Council and the Climate Smart Community Coordinator, at no compensation for these duties. Be it further resolved, the Chairperson of the C A C shall serve as the town's Climate Smart Community Coordinator. In, in this capacity, the Chairperson shall, one, schedule and chair meetings of the C A C, two, organize and coordinate the efforts of the C A C members, three, serve as a liaison between the C A C and the town board on all projects requiring town board approval, and move its adoption. Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-one twenty-two, resolution supporting Fourth of July Parade. Whereas July the fourth is a national holiday celebrating the birth of our nation and our independence, and whereas the town of Shandaken has always been supportive of community events that bring us together to celebrate, and whereas the community is again coordinating a Fourth of July Parade for two thousand twenty-two, therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shandaken supports the Fourth of July Parade to be held Monday, July fourth, at eleven A M. on Main Street, Phoenisha, New York. All are welcome to attend and participate, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-two dash twenty-two, resolution appointing summer recreational personnel. Whereas under Article Twenty, notes of Decision Nine of the town law, the town board shall appoint all employees of the town. Therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shandaken appoints the following personnel. Manuela Jean Pierre, Summer Rec Director, seven hundred dollars weekly. Kathleen Fitzsimmons, Assistant Director, five hundred and fifty dollars weekly. Unidentified unknown recreation specialist for an unidentified weekly amount. For the purpose of coordinating and managing the Town of Shandaken Summer Recreation Program to run from Wednesday, July sixth, two thousand twenty-two, through and including Friday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
I, I assume no one has been-
No one's been found, no.
Right.
Uh, yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes. Resolution eighty-three twenty-two, authorizing contract with U C A T. Whereas the Town of Shandaken Recreation Program runs from Wednesday, July sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and including Friday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty, August-
August.
Twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the Ulster County Area Transit System has provided us with required daily transportation for camp participants and counselors, excluding field trip dates, Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, and Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Therefore be it resolved, that the Town of Shandaken Town Board authorize the town supervisor to enter into an agreement with U C A T. in order to provide side transportation for those dates and programs, participants and employees, and I move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-four dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing contract for use of Bel Air Beach for Shandaken Summer Recreation Day Camp. Whereas the Town of Shandaken operates a summer recreational day camp for the re- for the benefit of its residents, and whereas the camp operate daily from nine A M. until four P M. on Wednesday through Friday, from July sixth, two thousand twenty-two, through August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas the Bel Air Day Use Beach is a local attraction that annually hosts our camp, and whereas the Olympic Regional Development Authority currently operates the beach, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Shandaken Town Board authorize the town supervisor to enter into an agreement with O R D. to operate the camp at the beach for the two thousand twenty-two summer season, and move its adoption.
I'll fix it.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-five twenty-two. Resolution, advertising for the transportation bids for Summer Recreation Program Field Trips. Whereas the Town of Shandaken Summer Recreation Program will be taking two field trips during the coming season, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Shandaken Town Board advertise transportation bids for the following field trip, for the, for the following field trips. Uh, two buses for round trip to and from New York State Museum in Albany, New York, uh, that'll be seven twenty-seven twenty-two. And two school buses for round trip to and from Zoomflume, East Durham, New York, eight-ten twenty-two. All bids must be received by July fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at three P M. at the Town Clerk's Office, Shandaken Town Hall, seven-two-zero-nine, Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York, one-two-four-eight-oh. To be awarded at town board meeting that night at seven P M., and move its adoption. Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-six twenty-two, Town of Shandaken Formal Complaint and Request for Investigation Against N I S E G. Whereas the Town of Shandaken and its residents receive their electric and gas utility service from New York State Electrical and Gas Corporation, N I S E G, and whereas it is, whereas it is the responsibility of the utility provider, as prescribed by New York State Public Service Law, P B S, Section sixty-five, to provide safe and adequate service and just and re- just and reasonable charges, and whereas the cost of these utilities have risen exponentially, up to sixty percent higher since the month of December, two thousand twenty-one, causing undue burden on customers, and whereas the town board of Shandaken has heard continuous complaints from residents as to the impact of these sudden increases, and whereas the town board of Shandaken has determined the current rates charged by, to customers by N I S E G to be untenable and unjustly inflated, and whereas N I S E G has erred in its responsibility to reasonably notify customers of these projected increases and ensure and consumers are protected from price volatility in the market, and whereas it is the duty of the Department of Public Service and Public Service Commission to ensure consumers' rights are protected and safeguarded from such issues, and whereas this body has power under New York State Public Service Law, Section seventy-one, to formally file a complaint and request for investigation regarding the price of these services on behalf of its constituency, and therefore let it be resolved that the town board of Shandaken calls upon the Department of Public Service to initiate an investigation into the rates of N I S E G under Section seventy-one of the Public Service Law. Be it further resolved, the town clerk will send a certified copy of this resolution to the, and New York State Public Service Commission, County Executive Pat Ryan, New York State Assemblyman Cahill, New York State Senator Pete O'Rocker, U S Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren, and New York Governor Hochel, and move its adoption.
Second.
Third.
Nysel? Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-seven dash twenty-two, resolution of time accruals for New York State Retirement System. Whereas the New York State Retirement System requires a report be filed with their offices listing those employees and elected and appointed officials enrolled in the system. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Shandaken hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials and will report the following days' work with the New York State and local employees retirement system based on the timekeeping system's record. Don't know how to read the table. Peter De Scapani, Supervisor. Seven days, participates, yes, days in the month, twenty point eight one. Joyce Grant, Town Clerk, standard workday hours, seven, participating in timekeeping, no. Uh, days a month based on record, twenty-one point seven seven. Kevin Van Blarken, Town Board, standard day, standard workday, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, two point three nine. Kyle Steen, Town Board, standard workday, seven hours, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, five point five five. Elizabeth Nysel, Town Board, standard workday hours, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, four point six. Eric Hoffmeister, Highway Superintendent, standard workday, eight hours, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, twenty-two point six seven. Grace Grant, Assessor, Chair, standard workday, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, twenty-one point nine eight. Dave Shannon, Assessor, part-time, standard workday hours, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record keeping, two point five three. Robert Stanley, Flood Plane Administrator, standard workday hours, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, one point three four. Chad Story, Police Chief, standard workday hours, eight, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, five point four two. Richard Mulier, Ambulance Chief, standard workday hours, eight, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, eleven point seven five. Richard Riccadella, Phoenisha Water Supply Superintendent, standard workday hours, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, twenty point oh nine. Wendy Lockwood, Justice Clerk, standard workday hours, seven, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, ten point eight three. Ernst Flonge, Ambulance Line Officer, standard workday hours, eight, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, one point five nine. James Cottington, Deputy Ambulance Chief, standard workday hours, eight, participates in timekeeping, no. Days a month based on record, three point three nine, and move its adoption.
Second.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes. Resolution eighty-eight twenty-two, resolution authorizing waiver of thirty-day notification required by the New York State Liquor Authority. Whereas McKinley Hollow Operators LLC, East Wind Motel, two twelve dash two twenty McKinley Hollow Road, Big Indian, New York, one-two-four-one-zero, has applied for a liquor license, and whereas McKinley Hollow Operators LLC has requested that the town waive the thirty-day notification required by the New York State Liquor Authority in an effort to expedite the granting of a liquor license to McKinley Hollow Operators LLC. And now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Shandaken does hereby grant the request of the McKinley Hollow Operators LLC and does hereby waive the thirty-day liquor license notice requirement to East Wind Motel, two twelve to two twenty McKinley Hollow Road, Big Indian, New York, one-two-four-one-oh. And I move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-nine dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing waiver of thirty-day notification required by the New York State Liquor Authority. Whereas Bel Air Rentals LLC, Bel Air Lodge, eight dash twenty-five, Hostel Drive, Pine Hill, New York, one-two-four-six-five, has applied for a liquor license. Whereas Bel Air Rentals LLC has requested that the town waive the thirty-day notification required by the New York State Liquor Authority in effort to expedite the granting of a liquor license to Bel Air Rentals LLC. And now therefore be it resolved, the town board of the Town of Shandaken does hereby grant the request that the Bel Air Rentals LLC does hereby waive the thirty-day liquor license notice requirement to Bel Air Rentals LLC, Bel Air Lodge, eight dash twenty-five, Hostel Drive, Pine Hill, New York, one-two-four-six-five, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution number ninety dash twenty-two, resolution for purchase and financing of replacement highway vehicle. Whereas the Town of Shandaken Highway Superintendent has identified one vehicle for replacement, and whereas the Town Highway Superintendent has identified this vehicle available through the Anadoga bid, therefore be it resolved that the Town, Town Shandaken Town Board does hereby authorize the town supervisor to approve the purchase of one, two thousand twenty-three, International H V five-zero-seven dump truck with plow bodies, dump trucks with plow bodies, including front plows and wings for a price not to exceed two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, and move its adoption. Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yep.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-one, two thousand twenty-two, Pine Hill Stormwater Engineering. Whereas the Town of Shandaken, Hamlet of Pine Hill, experiences frequent localized street flooding from stormwater runoff along Main Street. Whereas this flooding impacts the residential and commercial areas and causes erosion and transports eroded material into Birch Creek and its tributaries. And whereas in two thousand seven and twenty seventeen, the Town of Shandaken initiated a stormwater retrofit po- project to address these issues and retained S L R Engineering, formerly known as Malone and McBroom, Inc., to develop design plans for stormwater improvement. Therefore be it resolved, the town is determined it would like to continue working with S L R to move this project forward, and the town board hereby approves of the supervisor to enter into any contracts with S L R Engineering to develop the Pine Hill Stormwater Feasibility Study. Therefore be it further resolved, the town board authorize the supervisor to spend no more than eight thousand dollars for engineering of parcel S B L four point four-six dash four dash two-nine Pine Hill Firehouse as a suitable treatment area for stormwater infrastructure pending agreement contract with parcel owner, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarken?
Yes.
Supervisor De Scapani?
Yes, and a little clarification, we did the same, uh, resolution last month with a different parcel. We're just looking at this parcel first, because we don't have to buy it. It's already a town-owned parcel. Uh, we'll look to see if it's a possibility. Okay, go ahead.
Resolution ninety-two dash twenty-two, Ulster County Fire Mutual Aid Pine Hill. Be it resolved that the Town of Shandaken approves participation by the Pine Hill Fire District in the Ulster County Fire Mutual Aid Plan, as amended from time to time and further certifies Ulster County through its Deputy Director of Emergency Services Fire Coordinator, that it shall comply with the provisions of the plan. And be it further resolved that there are no resolutions in effect that restrict outside service and training by the named fire agency, and be it further resolved that there are currently no limitations, conditions or restrictions on the fire agency from providing prompt assistance, and the Deputy Director of Emergency Services Fire Coordinator shall be notified in writing if any such limitations are imposed subsequent to the adoption of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the named fire agency shall respond to all calls for assistance from another fire agency through the Ulster County Communication Center, also known as U C nine-one-one. And be it further resolved that the Town of Shandaken hereby acknowledges and accepts its financial responsibility pursuant to applicable law, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed to the Ulster County Department of Emergency Services, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake? Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Bastine?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarke?
Yes.
Supervisor Disclafani?
Yes.
It's time for open public comment. You can talk about anything. Anything but STRs.
My name is Hank Williams, I live in Woodland Valley, and I was wondering if there was any progress on the opposition to rail explorers with the lights on the tracks and the decking and the fifty Adirondack chairs that they proposed. I have a copy of the contract with the, uh, with Ulster County, and it says that contrary to one of the planning board members stating that they have a right to do whatever they want fifty feet from the center of the track. The contract says that it's a three-O gauge, that means it's three-foot distance from rail to rail, and they have ten-foot on either side from the center of the track. That, and they also have to abide by all town laws, state laws, or county laws, and also that means codes. So they just can't do whatever they want as they propose, and I have a copy of their confidential proposal to the county on what they plan on doing. So I just wondered if there's any updates, uh, as far as is the town opposing it? Is the town agreeing with them?
The town, um, and probably Grace knows more than I do about this, uh, as, as probably Rob knows more. I mean, they did some stuff in the, in the flood plain, but they've changed some of their plans. I don't believe they're going to be stopping in Mount Trumper.
They pulled the plans. What they had proposed is that shorter runs down Trumper and the turning around and going back. Last vacation that they were not with rail explorers, that they no longer tend to do that this season, they're going back to the operating area they had last season, same runs, same times. But the April six to that Mount Trumper station, I knew they pulled all the plans for the.
And that, that means they're not doing their next runs?
They're still.
They did last year.
They're, they're doing exactly what they did last year. Um, there wasn't, there, there was an additional building that they put in the, the beginning area, whatever, uh, some storage unit was. An office slash office or whatever, um, and.
And it was all properly submitted by the town?
Yeah, they replaced.
As far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, they've, they've done their permitting, and they've, they still have to go before the Ulster County again at the end of this year to redo another contract. Marty?
Hi, I'm Marty Gales, I'm from Big Indian, and, um, I have an issue I want to talk about, but I also wanted to make a, a calendar announcement. I thought I heard Gail say that our first concert, pre-concert in Big Indian Park was Memorial Day. It's Sunday of July fourth weekend, so the first one is the Sunday of July fourth.
So the third.
The third, yeah.
All right, so Big Indian, who's playing?
Oh, God. Very good, we had him last year, keyboard, um.
And what time is it, Marty?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Yeah. I'm here on behalf of the Big Indian Beautification Committee, which some of you know has been functioning for thirteen years, and our major project is, um, planting pots at the post office and at the park and around the hamlet a little bit, at what we call the Little Indian, um, and we also had a garden at the point, I brought you some pictures for show and tell. The point is an area where Firehouse Road comes into twenty-eight, and then a little bit beyond that, um, Maven Road comes in. And, um, over the years, and this started before I did, Jane Rossis planted a, a garden there with perennials, and we've maintained it, and it really has looked quite spectacular. However, um, we have a problem with a huge dead tree which has dropped very heavy limbs. John McIlady was volunteering to bring his mower down and mow the area, and had done that for several years, but he can't remove the limbs, they're too heavy. Um, and the grass now is, as you'll see, three to four feet high. So, um, there's a couple shots here.
Thank you.
What I'm asking for is your help. I, I don't know who, uh, who owns it. I understand it's a gentleman in New Jersey. Um, we've always volunteered, and he's never had a problem with our mowing it and having the flower bed there, but now with that tree, and that's the site that you see when you come in the bend and turn into Big Indian, is this big scarecrow of a dead pine tree. It's truly ugly, and it feels a little silly planting petunias when you've got this really ugly tree greening here. Um, plus, with the grass as high as it is, we, we can't get in to maintain the garden there, which is perennials, and which we could bring back, I'm sure, once the grass got cut. So I'm asking help getting the tree down, getting the grass cut, and then we'll pick up again with our volunteer work.
Calling volunteers to come help take down a tree in Big Indian.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think we can do that, you know, that's why I'm hoping you can refer it to, uh, the Highway Department does the mowing in the parks and stuff.
I'll ask Eric, he's not here tonight, but I'll definitely bring it up with him tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so, we need professional help.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Robert.
Uh, just for clarification, Pine Hill Firehouse property is not a town property. It's owned by the Pine Hill Fire Department, which is a independent company.
We'll get their approval first.
Well, I assume it'll be easy to get that. But it's not a property.
Okay.
The contract has been changed, and we're still working on that other post.
Right. I'm, I had, called me once and never called me again.
Why, you guys have a special meeting on the fifth?
Yesterday.
Fifth of July.
Fifth of July.
It's scheduled for the following week.
Oh, we don't, is this saying on our schedule, we have a meeting on the fifth?
It's Tuesday, scheduled meeting is in eleven.
It's on our schedule as of fifth. Oh, yeah.
It's the fourth.
I don't know, do you have your schedule, Tom? I thought it was the fifth, I thought it was odd, too.
The fourth is on Sunday.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just thought it was the next.
What do you think, Joyce?
I don't know, well, I'll change it then, that's all, we're gonna do our, um, I don't know, I have to look, do you, Tom, do you have the schedule of our meeting dates? Or that was just for the, that was for the video?
In the.
Yeah.
The bids can still be due the fifth, and then we, we'll do the bids when we have our meeting.
Yeah. It's a fifth resolution? I believe it. Did you find it? I thought it was the day after. Oh, yeah, all right. Fifth resolution, you said, right?
No, I said it's one of the first resolutions, like the third one of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Yeah.
July eleventh?
July eleventh.
Second Monday, yeah. All right, so we'll have to do the bids to the, um, to receive on Jul- July eleventh.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Can we receive on the fifth and meet on the eleventh?
Second Monday.
And they need to be received by?
Well, by three o'clock that day.
That day.
For the, yeah, I'll change it.
By three o'clock that day.
Yeah.
The eleventh. Yeah, because we'll all forget, too, July eleventh is our next town board meeting.
Lastly, um, I want to thank you for letting my dad speak, you missed my dad.
There's, I have to do a quick update on the cell service bid.
Please.
Um, so, this has come up in the last couple of months, there really hasn't been that much, uh, different from, from prior months, but we have, uh, been working with a, a company called Crown Castle attempting to, um, set what are called ground and option leases, which give them the ability to, uh, do survey and exploratory work to see whether a particular parcel may be viable as a cell tower, uh, continuing to go back and forth with them as far as terms, uh, to hopefully bring back a, a contract, uh, I would hope, maybe next month to consider. At the same time, uh, I was able to get ahold of a second company, uh, known as Wireless Edge, a little bit smaller, but a little bit closer to home here, they have a number of towers in our region, uh, and I was actually driving around with them this morning, uh, going around seeing potential parcels there. I would like to have a contract from them as well, make us the belle of the ball, so we'd have two competing contracts to perhaps look at, so that we could obviously, uh, consider which one might be better for the town. Obviously, uh, still, still a bunch of work there, but attempting to get as many players in the game, so we have as many options as possible, and hopefully the, the best potential terms. So, right now, it's paperwork hell, for lack of a better term, but, um, hopefully some, uh, some potential movement there. It's a, it's a long process, but, uh, attempting to, to potentially find some self-service options for the Phoenician twenty-eight area.
Uh, is that being coordinated with the county's communication tower plan?
So, every, roughly every two to three weeks, I send a message in to, to Dennis. Um, we're trying to work in tandem with some plans that the county is doing as far as, I believe they're predominantly focusing on, um, emergency radio as their primary focus. Um, we, obviously, we don't want to have an abundance of towers, we want just enough towers, we don't want to build one and then have the county build one right next to it. So I keep in touch with him, and I think we're a little ahead of them right now, um, but I let him know where we're at, um, as, as frequently as I can, so that we're, we're in pace.
Thank you.
Yep.
I also forgot to mention that Phoenician February annual upgrades will be Sunday, July thirty-first. You can also see me in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. All right, if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn a meeting in memory of Robert Stanley Senior, Linda O'Connor, Elizabeth Carr, and Patty Clark. Thank you very much.